Hello to all of the candidates for Grass Valley City Council tonight. And welcome to everybody who's joining us to listen to this candidate forum. My name is Jan Bedain and I'm co-president of the League of Women Voters of Nevada County. The League of Women Voters is a political but nonpartisan organization. And we try to do as much voter education as we possibly can so that voters can fill out their ballots feeling as though they actually understand the issues. And in tonight's case, that they know who the candidates are. We have a lot of information on our website concerning our upcoming election, November 5th. Please check that out. There's lots of things I could tell you right now. But honestly, just go to the website and you will find lots of information about pros and cons. And you'll see other candidate forums listed there and great resources for places to go and do your own research. That website is www.lwvnevada county.org. So tonight, we are coming to you via Zoom so that all our candidates were able to participate. And tonight's moderator is Jennifer Granger. For those of you who have been with us for some of our other forums, you'll know Jennifer. She's a local attorney and just a great moderator. So at this point, I am going to turn to, well, no, I'm going to tell you one other thing. If you, the, we received many questions from the community in advance. And we, we have, we have a good, a good amount of questions that cover a lot of, a lot of ideas in here. However, if you have a question, please use the question icon. And Kyle, if you need to jump in here and say anything about where that question icon is, could you do that?
Sure. It's the Q and A button at the bottom. Any of the attendees can enter a question and we'll get the pop up and answer it.
Okay, great. So send in your questions and we will try to fit them into our already existing questions. We do not have a chat tonight. And I also just want to say a final thank you to Nevada County media. They have allowed us to present this forum and we're at their studios right now. It's really fun and they are just great. So many thanks to them. And now I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Granger.
Thank you, Jan. Good evening, everyone. Just for a brief overview, each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. We're going by, in alphabetical order. So beginning with Jan Arbuckle, ending with Tom Ivy. And then for closing, we'll do the reverse. So Tom Ivy will do his closing first, Jan Arbuckle last. You each, then we'll go through the questions. Well, you each will have one minute for a question. The first question, we'll start with Joe Bonamolo answering. And then again, go down alphabetically. And then each of you will, will rotate being the first person to answer and so forth, so forth. You each have two rebuttals. You have a one-minute rebuttal if you so choose. Please wait to, till all five of you have answered and then you can raise your hand for the rebuttal. Okay? And I will now introduce the candidates. We have Jan Arbuckle, Joe Bonamolo, Bob Branstrom, Matthew Coulter, and Tom Ivy. Okay, so without further ado, we'll go to Jan Arbuckle with the first opening statement, followed by Joe, Bob, Matthew, and Tom. So Ms. Arbuckle, please introduce yourself and start your opening. So Jan, you need to unmute yourself and make sure your video is on.
I think that's Jan Bedain's screen. Jan Arbuckle had her full name on there and it looks like she's dropped off the Zoom.
Oh dear. Well.
Yeah, I don't see Jen on the list anymore.
Hmm. Yeah, well, let's start, let's see. Let's start with the, um, let's start with the next one and we'll figure out what's going on.
Okay, so we'll move on to Joe Bonamolo then. Joe?
Okay, well, thank you to the League of Women Voters for having me here today. I appreciate it and thanks, thanks to all the people out there for showing up for this meeting. I am running for Grass Valley City Council. My name is Joseph Bonamolo. I go by Joe or Joseph, whatever, whatever works for you guys. I've lived in this county and this town for 42-plus years. I was able to go into the Navy when I was a young man, so I'm a veteran. I was a naval ICU corpsman, as well as I learned to patch up Marines in the field. So I had some field medicine there as well. I am a single father of daughters and I am a homeschool PE teacher. I also have some experience with government. I was, I'm on the board, a local board of the swim team, which isn't the biggest part, but it does afford us the opportunity to form a quorum and make votes and elect officers, et cetera. Where I really got my experience in is I was able to form an online assembly in 2020, California Assembly of the People, and we did that for about 10 months online. So we elected officers, formed quorums, discussed issues and tried to, you know, attempted to provide solutions and remedies for those issues. So that was a really great experience. And then I went on to form a local assembly here in Nevada County, which we functioned for a couple of years. And I was able to be really instrument, yeah, instrumentally involved in that. So that gave me some experience. It propelled me to go ahead and think about running for some sort of government office. And so here I am today to do that. I really want to work for the people. I don't want to be a politician, you know? I want to be a public servant and do my civic duty. And I think that's really important for people to step up and to be able to give their time. I've often told many people in this community, I would do this job for free because I think it's that important for us to get ourselves involved in governance and to, you know, it's kind of like being a parent where you're, you're, you know, it's a selfless job, you know? And so.
Joe, you've run over your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we go to Bob Branstrom. Mr. Rob Branstrom, two minutes, please.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here and thank you to the League for hosting the forum. Also, thanks to my fellow candidates, all of them for participating. I'm Bob Branstrom and for the past four years, I have had the privilege of representing you on the Grass Valley City Council. Thank you for placing your trust in me over that time. My career in government and business, along with my education, taught me about finance, government operations, and legal issues, and provided me the social skills to listen and work well with others. Before taking office as your council member, I prepared myself by attending council meetings for four years and by serving on two citizen oversight committees for the county's library sales act and the high school district's bond measure. I've been an active volunteer in the community, having served as a master gardener, a chaplain at the hospital, and as a board member of Sierra Streams Institute. I have a personal mantra, leave things better than you find them. As a council member, along with my colleagues, Jan and Tom, we've been doing exactly that in the past four years. Here's a brief summary of what we've accomplished. We've created the Mel Street Plaza, repaved many of our roads, upgraded Memorial Park with new pools, pickleball courts, a basketball court, and new turf for the baseball field. We've honored our history by rejuvenating the historical commission and passing a resolution supporting the Nisannon tribe's efforts to regain federal recognition. We've joined Pioneer Community Energy, lowering the cost of your electricity compared to PG&E rates. We've continued to provide the core of city services, police, fire, water, and sewer. And we've done all of these things while maintaining the city's financial integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coulter, you go next, two minutes.
Great, thank you. Is there a timer for that or?
Yep, there's a timer at the top of the screen.
I don't get it. I have no timer. I'll just go ahead and you can let me know.
Okay, I'll let you know. Okay. And to our audience, Mr. Coulter's on audio tonight, only not video. There was a technical issue there. So go ahead, Mr. Coulter.
Thank you. Yes, Matthew Coulter, running for city council. I tried to run in 2018, 2020, 2022, and now again in 2024. Each time I tried to run, the city of Grass Valley has seen fit to throw restraining orders at me because they don't like my comments and my opinions on what they're doing with the city and with the taxpayers' money. But yet they've spent over $500,000 of taxpayers' money dragging me through court to do nothing more than to silence me. They've got restraining orders. As a matter of fact, I was in court just today with a new three-year restraining order they're trying to do using the city's finances to do it. I encourage the taxpayers to follow the money of these folks and see what they're doing with the money and who gets the money. It's a very small group of people that get the money. And they're all very tightly knit, both with city council, the Downtown Association Chamber of Commerce, and a few others I could name in town. To the degree that when I ran in 2022, the League of Women Voters saw fit to not have any forum at all between me and my two opponents because they deemed me a safety risk. So they decided just not to have any, any forums at all and just shoo in the two people that are there now that have two more years. Both Hillary and Haven, Hillary got a DUI a month later. Haven has blatantly sold her business and profited directly, which is illegal to do from the city council position. So basically, I've been a watchdog. I've gone to the city council meetings for over a decade, well over a decade, and as well as the planning commission, board of supervisors, Nevada City City Council meetings, and many other meetings to see what's going on, what's being duplicated, and why are things just so messed up?
Okay, so Mr. Coulter, that's your 10 minutes.
Two minutes.
Thank you.
Ten more?
Two minutes. That, you have, you have talked for two minutes. Your opening statement is concluded. So now we move on, we move on to Tom Ivy and his opening statement.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Tom Ivy. This is, I'm, I'm running for my second term here on Grass Valley City Council. This is the town I was born and raised in, that I love very much and that I've been participating in since a child, since starting at 4H in local schools and continuing on into my, my current years. So the first term, I was, I think that we got a lot of good, good done here at the city of Grass Valley. We've been creating some public spaces that's benefiting all of us. We've gotten to fight climate change and make our electricity greener and at the same time that we're keeping the price the same and stable and without rising. And we're, we're trying to embrace diversity in downtown. And we're just doing a whole lot more. And so I'm excited to continue to do that hard work, to, to work, to answer questions tonight, to, to interact with my community, to represent my constituents. And so I appreciate the opportunity here today and I look forward to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And last, we have Ms. Arbuckle.
I apologize, my computer kicked me out. So, and back. Good evening. I'm Jan Arbuckle and I'm honored to be a candidate for the Grass Valley City Council. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for this forum. It's been my honor to serve this community and I have so much more to contribute, especially during these trying times. I was born and raised in Southern California, relocated to Sacramento in the 70s. After serving almost two decades as a deputy sheriff in Sacramento County, I found my way to Grass Valley in 2003. I continued my public service through two consecutive terms on the Nevada County Civil Grand Jury. In 2007, I was appointed to the Grass Valley City Council, successfully elected since November of 2008, and honored to be selected as mayor in 2010 and again in 2022.
Oh, dear. Jan, I think you got.
Okay, let me, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I've championed Grass Valley beyond our city limits, being active in the League of California Cities, where I have served on their board of directors since 2013. In 2018, I was elected to League president. I served on the League's Public Safety Policy Committee and a founding member of the League's Women's Caucus, co-chair of the League and California State Association of Counties Joint Homelessness Task Force. I was appointed to the Governor's Master Plan on Aging Stakeholder Task Force, where I represented the rural perspective and advocated for our rural community. I currently serve on the National League of Cities Board of Directors and chair the Small Cities Council. When I'm appointed to the Grass Valley City Council, I commit myself to Grass Valley with my whole heart. My decisions have always been based on what is best for the residents of Grass Valley, not my personal opinion or political ideology. I believe that cooperation amongst all Nevada County entities is paramount in creating the grass valley we want. Going forward, we need strong, committed leaders willing to persevere during these unprecedented times. I am committed to work collaboratively with other government agencies to find resolutions to our common issues. I am looking forward to our conversation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so before we start with the questions, I just want to remind our audience that there are three open seats. So these five candidates will be vying for three seats on the Grass Valley Council. And I'd also like to remind each of the five of you that please don't make disparaging remarks about other candidates. This is a, a policy forum, so we're here to hear, we are here tonight to hear your viewpoints on different policies as posed in the questions. And we're gonna, it's not a debate. We're not here to attack one another. We're just here to answer the questions and hear your viewpoints on policy. Okay, now with that, we'll go to the first question and we'll start with Mr. Branstrom. Mr. Branstrom, what do you believe are the top three issues facing our city today? And how do you plan to address them?
I think we need economic diversity in our community. Currently, we rely heavily on retirees and tourists. We have a small amount of small industry and I would like to see that small industry and technology expanded. I'm active with the Economic Resource Council, which is counseling and advising entrepreneurs in the areas to do that. Another issue is our wildfire risk and the city is moving forward. Thank you voters for passing Measure B on improving our fire response by adding a third member to our fire engines. And we'll be doing fuel reduction in and around the city and working with homeowners. Third issue, I always want to maintain financial integrity for the city. That's a core value of mine and I will be watching that like a hawk. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Coulter, you're next. You have one minute, please. Mr. Coulter, you need to unmute.
Yes, could you ask the question again?
Yes. What do you believe are the top three issues facing our city today? And how do you plan to address them?
I would say it would definitely be fire, homelessness, and drugs and crime would go with that. Addressing it would be actually picking up the dry vegetation that's in piles all over town that public works drives by on a daily basis and chooses to ignore, as well as the city itself stockpiles their stuff that they do pick up in places that are really inappropriate and is a high fire danger. So I would encourage the city to lead by example when it comes to the fire situation. The homelessness situation, none of the panelists or anyone I know that at City Hall of the 138 or more employees have ever been homeless. I have been homeless for eight years locally in Nevada County and am well-versed on what goes on in the homeless community in Nevada County and their needs and the fact that they have been sidelined and basically been chased like feral animals around town, which still continues today.
Okay, Mr. Coulter, that's your minute. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. Now we go to Mr. Ivy.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I think fire and its effects on our home insurance. I think housing and I think our ability to sustain an economy as we enter into a new era, as we battle climate change, as we embrace our, our youth and homelessness, I guess is one big third category. I look forward over the coming years and decades to, to work restlessly with putting all of our citizens in a better place when it comes to fire and home insurance, to build that plan regionally, to use our Measure B funds to make sure that we can prevent fires from growing to an uncontrollable size. And over the years, over the decades, enacting a plan that prevents a large fire from hurting our community. There's no stone that we can't look at when it comes to housing and when it comes to climate change and when it comes to our economy, we have to do all this together and I look forward to it.
Thank you. Ms. Arbuckle?
Yes, thank you. My top three are wildfire, housing, and economic and workforce development. Wildfire, we, again, I want to thank the voters for passing Measure B. We are already working on a plan on how we're going to bring that forward. The tax goes into effect October 1st. We're already hiring new additional firefighters. So we're working really hard with that and with trying and with other agencies to try and mitigate our, mitigate our, our fire danger. Housing is a big problem up and down the state and not actually all over the country. We need to find out where we can get less regulation so that the housing, so that the developers can actually build the houses that we need so desperately. And economic and workforce development, we need to start working with the schools and get them to train, teach more of a technical program. I know Sierra College is working on that and they've done a great job in, in, in the past. And they're still working forward to having not just academic, but technical and practical courses available to the people in C R College up here, not in Rockland.
Thank you. Okay, and Mr. Bonamolo, you're.
Yeah, thank you. So my three topics are going to be fire protection, making sure that the funds are properly allocated to back law enforcement so that we can keep our city vibrant, you know? With the, we have a problem with the homelessness, the drugs and the crime. It's got it really out of hand here, it seems, in the last couple of years. And then infrastructure, because, you know, we've had really bad roads for a long time and other areas in the city that just need to be maintained better. And I think, once again, it's, you know, been brought up quite a bit, but allocating the funds correctly and appropriately would be a big job in, in making that happen.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move to our next question. Mr. Coulter, you'll answer first, so please unmute yourself. Okay, so the question is, it's on housing. Grass Valley has a thriving tourism and hospitality sector critical to our economy, yet our service workers are finding it increasingly difficult to find affordable housing. We cannot have one without the other. What is your approach to making sure that both tourism and workforce housing are viable? And would it include consideration of a rent control, which if state Proposition 33 passes, the city could enact? Mr. Coulter, you have one minute.
That's quite the question. Well, first of all, I would say a moratorium on Airbnbs like South Lake Tahoe did, like they're doing Truckee, like they're doing a lot of other tourist communities because the Airbnbs are the places that are being purchased to be used for the tourists. Yet the people that wash the toilets and serve the tourists are living in their cars, becoming homeless, moving out of the area. Our service industry just had the largest drop in employees in the last several years, in the last month. So it's on the downturn. And I think that, I know that Truckee allowed service workers to actually live in their cars legally. And that might have to be something that we do here because we have just completely bypassed the situation of workforce housing because people with three and four houses have a lot more money and they buy more quickly versus someone that will have to work their entire life to possibly own a Habitat for Humanity's house.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ivy?
Um, yeah. You know, housing affects all of us. It's not just the service industry. And the service industry is important, but housing affects so many of us in this county. So it's incumbent on us to do everything that we can to, to look at every barrier that we have as a small city. And, and we've been doing that. And so how can we continue to do that? How can we possibly lower any hurdles for any housing in the future? That's on the table. How can we work with the local housing trust fund that was successful in Nevada City to build workforce housing? How can we continue to work with Habitat for Humanity? These might all be small steps, but every, every step is required. I think that we should be asking statewide and federally that we need to look at what incentives are in place that have caused this situation. But ultimately, locally, we just have to continue. We have to look at every option. You know, we're a small city and we do a lot, so we can't just say that we can, we can change this overnight or we can make miracles, but we sure have to try.
Thank you. Ms. Arbuckle?
Yes, housing has been an issue for, forever. And affordable housing is, is by definition, where, what is affordable? Affordable to who? And I think that that's one of the things that we really need to look at and we've been looking at because we have a workforce here that don't qualify for what is considered affordable housing. So what we really need to concentrate on, concentrate on is workforce housing.
Frozen. Frozen.
So Ms. Arbuckle, you're frozen. I wonder if maybe if you turn your video off and just have your audio, perhaps that would solve the problem.
She's got half of her time left, so we can give that back to her when she comes back on.
Okay, so why don't we move on to Mr. Bonamolo?
Can you please repeat that question, just so it's fresh in my mind? Thank you.
Okay, Grass Valley has a thriving tourism and hospitality sector critical to our economy, yet our service workers are finding it increasingly difficult, difficult to find affordable housing. We cannot have one without the other. What is your approach to making sure that both tourism and workforce housing are viable? And would it include consideration of rent control, which if state Proposition 33 passes, the city could enact?
Yeah, that's a pretty complex question. Hopefully I can give a simple answer. You know, I, I, living here for a long time, I see constantly that we are having trouble keeping people in homes. You know, the homelessness crisis has grown, you know, along with the drug issues and crime. You know, we do have a bolstered tourism amount, but how long is that going to last if we allow these other problems to continue? So we do need to try to corral some housing. However, like Matt said, you know, we have a B and B issue where people are coming, allowed to come in with a lot of money and buy up homes that people have ran away from because they can't afford to live in this county or this state anymore. And it's kind of a monopolization of the housing, you know, issue that we have here. And we really need to take a look at that as well as, you know, working with the county to make sure that we're giving the, our county residents benefits instead of allowing a lot of people to come into our community that can't afford to be here.
Thank you, Joe. So Jan, we'll go back to you. You have 30 seconds left. Are you there? Okay, we'll move on to Bob then. Bob, you have one minute, please.
Thank you. Housing prices are exceedingly high for everyone, but especially for our service workers. Two reasons for that. One is the state of California has not been building adequate housing. That restriction in the supply of new homes has caused prices to go up. In addition, the state legislature has increased the cost of housing by adding more and more. In addition, the state legislature has um increased the cost of housing by adding more and more requirements on new housing. So as things to do about this, I would suggest we build more housing locally to increase the supply. We are already doing that with uh Loma Rica and um Dorsey Marketplace, soon to be building, and a number of smaller developments. And I would also like to see us work more with the League of California Cities to lobby for reductions in the uh regulations that are required, that make housing expensive to build.
Okay, thank you. Ja- uh, Jan Arbuckle, you have thirty seconds.
Okay, I apologize. The other thing we need up here is reliable wifi and and internet connection. And um, that's one of the things that I know that we're working on. It wasn't one of my original three, but um considering the problems I'm having getting kicked off my internet, um, I think we really need to do something about getting some type of stability with our internet, whether it can comes through fiber or if it comes, there's a, there's a fairly new technology that sends the um internet through the airwaves as opposed to um fiber. And I think especially considering that.
That's your time's up. Thank you.
That's okay. Thank you.
Okay, so um, Jan, you might do better to turn your video off and just have your audio on. It might make a more stable connection. Okay, at any rate, okay, we're moving on to the next question. Mr. Ivy, you answer first. Um, with the Loma Rica development underway and Dorsey interchange project in the hopper, what are your, what are your concerns about a significant increase in population, more retail stores and automobiles? How do we protect our downtowns and what thoughts do you have about transportation planning?
Well, I'd 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 caution that we need to look and see how these developments progress. They they don't have to build. Yeah, they might be approved to build, but we'll see what they find to be economically feasible to move forward with. So um, you know, often we see these big developments, sometimes take it slow and and wait for the right time to add more housing. That being said, uh, it's absolutely always a good time to plan uh for our community to circulate uh more easily, to to plan for walkability, to plan for uh kids to be able to get on a bike and go to a library or go to school. And we're doing that. And we have a Wolf Creek watershed plan that's gonna have a trail that goes from the Loma Rica development to the existing uh Wolf Creek Trail. Uh, we're early in that process, but that will one day be a paved path that leads people to downtown. So you can get out of your car and 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 go around town on an e-bike. And um, that connectivity is important. It's not just for a nice walk. Uh, it's important for all of us to have the ability uh to work in a community together. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Arbuckle?
Okay, um, transportation without, with the housing again, as um, as Tom said, it's been in the planning stages for a very long time. We don't know when and if they're gonna, they're gonna move forward. We need the housing, that's that's obvious. And what we can do to mitigate the um, the cars on the road? I don't, I think we have a good transportation system right now and I just think it needs to improve a little bit more. We, I know that um, there is a way for our seniors to get around with um, they have discounted fares scares. I think they still call it the golden ticket so that they can ride the, our public transportation for free. And that's one of the things that we have to continue to promote. As far as affecting the our retail, I'm not sure that it, I think if anything, it's going to make the businesses, our local businesses more um more profitable, which is absolutely critical, you know, to to sustain our.
The, your minute's up. Okay, uh, Mr. Bonamolo?
Okay, please repeat, cuz I'm getting it on the the.
Yeah, with the Loma Rica development underway and Dorsey intercha- interchange project in the hopper, what are your concerns about a significant increase in population, more retail stores and automobiles? How do we protect our downtowns and what thoughts do you have about transportation planning?
Well, I, much to the different opinion of some of the other speakers, I mean, I we have a small uh mountain community and uh we are already overblown, I think, with the residents and uh with the, with, you know, the functionality of the the tr- the transportation issues, you know, like I live right up off of Dorsey and I can barely get out of my driveway at certain times of the day. Um, so uh, you know, really, we need to focus on the maintenance of our roads. Uh, we need to try to decrease the, 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 the flow uh a bit if possible. Now, I, I like the idea of of creating the bike paths and those types of things, but I, you know, we, we, once again, we're a small city and that also creates some issues with safety. Um, yeah, uh, rural roads and whatnot and and we do have a big problem with the homelessness. So how many people are really gonna be feeling safe out there on the roads? I think we have priorities and practical applications we need to apply first.
Thank you. Mr. Branstrom?
Thank you. Yes, um, new developments will bring in more people and more people may mean more traffic. I say may because many of our local businesses um have been hurting due to uh competition from the internet. And so having more people here to support those businesses is a valuable thing. If there are increases in traffic, some of those changes will be mitigated, are required to be mitigated as part of those projects. Any additional uh problems resulting, um, I like to take a live and learn approach of let's wait and see if and when and where problems occur and then address those problems once we have uh that additional knowledge.
Thank you. Mr. Coulter?
Yes, on the Loma Rica and Dorsey Marketplace, I sat in on all those meetings from the preconception all the way through to where they're at now. And the Loma Rica project is done by a developer that, this is his very first public project. Everything he's done before this has been private golf courses, so he's unaware of some of the things, the, the public demands or should have access to, like sidewalks and such. Um, the Dorsey Marketplace, the housing buildout, part of that project is at the ten-year mark. It's a ten-year buildout and the housing is the last thing to be done after all the other retail uh things are put in. So we talk about housing. I haven't seen a house going to Loma Rica yet. I saw two guys out there putting up some light poles the other day and homeless guy living in the tunnel that multiple women said at the meetings, they could not walk through safely and I agree with them wholeheartedly, uh, because the original development had bridges, not tunnels. Uh, these projects were rushed through so they could beat the solar demands and some of the other requirements to have it be a little bit cheaper for the developer, which was a developer gimme.
Your minute is up, Mr. Coulter.
Okay, I hope you, I hope you inter- interrupt other people also.
I am. So you, you all need to be cognizant of the one-minute mark, please. Um, okay, so the next question begins with Mr. Ms. Arbuckle. Um, has the new Mill Street Plaza met the city's expectations for the success and health of our downtown? And what are your thoughts on Ashley Furniture, the largest store on Mill Street, closing in addition to a few other empty storefronts?
Actually, I think it has exceeded our um expectations. And I know in the beginning, when we started talking about it, we had a lot of the businesses that are on Mill Street and have been on Mill Street for a long time. Now questioned that they thought they were gonna end up out of business. They did not end up out of business. In fact, they're profiting more than they ever had before. Yes, we've lost some businesses, but then you always lose businesses through attrition. As far as Ashley goes, they're closing not just the Grass Valley store, but they're closing all three of their stores. They wanna go and do other things. At the mo- at the, this time is my understanding that a portion of Ashley's has been um has been leased or is in the process of, which will contain furniture. The rest of it, there are, there are several people that are interested in that space. So I'm really not worried about having a big empty space like Nevada City has had for so long on Mill Street. But I think that the.
Ms. Arbuckle, that your time is up. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I can't see a timer, so I apologize.
Okay, um, Mr. Bonamolo, you have one minute, please.
Okay, so please send me with a question, cuz I have to filter through the other candidates speaking.
Okay, has the new Mill Street Plaza met the city's expectations for the success and health of our downtown? And what are your thoughts on Ashley Furniture, the largest store on Mill Street, closing in addition to a few other empty storefronts?
Wow, you know, um, as stated in the city budget, it talks about how the economic downturns of COVID are no longer an issue and I kinda laughed that one off, because I think so many small businesses were affected and still continue to be affected to this day. Uh, that is governance creating those situations and not supporting uh local businesses as needed at the time. You know, a lot of restaurants were driven out of business. A lot of people left this state because of trying to survive in this economy. Um, so may, whether may businesses, uh, new businesses may come along, they're gonna say uh face the same challenges as the old businesses were. And I, I, you know, I love Mill Street, but I think uh a lot of money was appropriated to that and not enough money given to the other issues really affecting this community that would uh actually even improve that situation, because we have a lot of crime and homelessness and people are afraid to go out at night around here. I've seen the testimonials uh about that. And so, you know, once again, I think we need to focus on practical solutions and not just beautifying our town, but also providing the safety issues and uh remedies there.
Thank you. Mr. Branstrom?
And so the first question, um, I think that the Mill Street Plaza has far exceeded our hopes and expectations. Um, businesses are thriving as a rule down there and you can walk down there almost any day of the week, including a Sunday evening and see people down there um with their families, uh with their dogs, uh meeting friends for dinner or whatever. So it's working very well. There are occasional vacancies, but that's normal business, that businesses move or go out of business and um those businesses are being quickly refilled. Regarding the furniture store, as Jan uh Arbuckle said, um, that's a, it's a chain store company out of the Central Valley, a small family chain, and they're closing their entire business. It doesn't have to do with Grass Valley specifically. It just happens that they own that particular location. And I'm um optimistic that that retail space will be refilled uh in a reasonable time period.
Thank you. Mr. Coulter?
Yes, I'm sorry to see uh Ashley go. I know the um folks there did their best and had a really a hard time working with the city on a lot of different issues over a lot of years, even before it was Ashley, uh, previous to Evans. Um, we also lost the Honda shop recently, which was another large tax base for Grass Valley. And these things are avoidable with communication, with codes and standards that the city refuses to implement. The Mill Street Mall in itself was all done during COVID, behind closed doors, without the public's knowledge, voting, opinion, or anything. And you can watch it in the videos of their friends, Keone Allen, the main developer, in the meetings without masks during COVID lockdown, when we weren't allowed to go to city council meetings. But they had their meetings with the developers who then became millionaires from these projects. And you can shake your head moderator all you want. You're supposed to be non.
Coulter, your time is up. It's been over.
You're shaking your head at me.
Uh, okay, Mr. Ivy, you have a minute?
Uh, Mill Street's a wonderful resource and it's been great to see it unfold successfully. Uh, you know, it was a risky, it was a risky proposition, so I'm glad that it did unfold. Uh, expectations are always uh can be deadly, right? So I think a lot of us had bated breath, right? We, we, we saw a good idea and we hoped that would work out. And it, and it mostly has. It's been fantastic for most of our community. Uh, it doesn't mean that there won't be some challenges moving forward and so that's something that um I think we all will look forward to uh as a community, right? When I say all of us, um to work together to to keep this centerpiece of our community vibrant. Um, the city of Grass Valley plays a role in that and I look forward to playing a role in that and um and so it's always, it's always a bummer to see a cornerstone and a big store leave. Um, you know, time waits for none of us, so we just have to, to keep our head about us, uh, keep our thoughts about us and and work as a community with the Downtown Association, with our community to do more. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, uh, we begin with you, Mr. Bonamolo.
Jennifer, I would like a rebuttal.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see. Okay, uh, you have one minute to rebut, Mr. Branstrom. Oh wait, your audio's off.
Thank you. I would like to rebut Mr. Um, Coulter's comments that the Mill Street Plaza project was done behind closed doors. It was done very above board with, uh, I think the Chamber of Commerce had multiple surveys. The city did a major survey during a big public event down on the plaza, asking people what they wanted. And every action taken by the city council to implement the project was done in open session with agendaized item following uh the Brown Act requirements. So um, I just wanna make that correction.
I'd, I'd also like to rebut. I had my hand up.
Do I have a rebuttal also?
Uh, okay, well, let's start with Mr. Bonamolo and then we'll go to you, Mr. Coulter.
Yeah, I'm not sure if Bob had his hand up or not, but I did it the correct way and pushed the little button, so. Um, I, I would like to rebut, you know, many of the council's statements on uh, you know, how Mill Street is flourishing. And I personally have talked to business owners down there that are barely making it, you know, uh, Deloro Theater closed down and we had a new people, uh, new business owner purchase that and I don't see them really flourishing. Um, several of the restaurants were curtailed during the COVID time. There, you know, the people that wanted to wait for the money shut down and they got some money, you know, for doing that. So I, I really uh would disagree with uh the statements that the current uh, the council people are making. Um, it's been rough on everybody and I don't see a flourishing town right now, especially with the crime and homelessness and drugs that are threatening that as well.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Coulter, you have one minute for your rebuttal?
Yes, great. Uh, my rebuttal is that these were done behind closed doors. You, anyone go to YouTube, go to the city council meetings, look at them and see who is in the meetings. And this is during COVID lockdown, when we weren't allowed to go to the meetings at all. So it's all plain, it's all out in the open. It's, uh, city keeps pretty good records on this stuff. And the developers that were given these are continuing to Airbnb our town, continuing to profit on these continued projects that they have no bid contracts on for the city. It's corruption, it's just outrageous and it's stealing public land. I paid gas tax on that piece of street my entire life that I've been driving and they take it and make it into a mall. That seems a, a bit illegal to me to take public property and give it to certain people that will benefit them. That's not even playing field in my book as far as the retail. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we go to uh, Mr. Bonamolo. How can the downtown area accommodate the increased pressure on parking created by the new Mill Street Plaza? Is the three oh nine Mill Street parking lot enough?
That's simple. Reopen Mill Street. You'd have a lot more parking, you know? Uh, I think that's what I've heard over the years from a lot of seniors, that they're really unhappy that they cannot park in the street anymore. I've heard people say, oh, but you know, the kids can play in the street. I don't know, is that teaching them very good safety rules that the, they think that they can play in the street? Um, you know, I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of a simple solution. You know, we, we reopen the streets that are meant to be parked on. Um, we can ex- we can expand certain parts of the city to find parking. I know they had a a plan to do that before and, you know, with the proper planning and 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 motivation and attention to detail, we can do that again. Yeah, I, I just see, you know, it's not benefiting everybody to close Mill Street and it's only benefiting mostly the businesses which are falling out of line. They're not staying there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Branstrom?
Yes, the uh, uh, when putting in a pedestrian plaza did take out some parking spaces. The city has been very aware of that and has added spaces in the Church Street parking lot, which is right behind many of those shops. We have also recently approved a uh, a restriping of Main Street to add additional parking. We have also just opened this summer a brand-new parking lot, just a tenth of a mile from the Deloro Theater on uh Mill Street. So we've been very responsive to the city. And my observation as someone who uses this area regularly is that unless there's a big event, there is plenty of parking downtown. The only difficulty is for people who. The only difficulty is for people who have mobility issues, who want to walk up the hill from some of those parking areas. And for those people, we have added a loading zone at the Del Oro so that they can be dropped off and wait for someone else to come join them.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter.
Yes, could you repeat the question?
Yes, how can the downtown area accommodate the increased pressure on parking created by our new Mill Street Plaza? Is the 309 Mill Street parking lot enough?
Well, there's been talking about having employees that work downtown park not in those lots that are close to downtown. Now, every employee wants to park right in front of where they work. I get that. But they, what they fail to recognize is that they are eliminating a customer when they do that. There needs to be a campaign working to that end to get the folks to park a little farther away. Because I know a lot of people that work downtown that say, oh, doggone it, my parking place got taken. And it's like, you know, two places away from their business. And they don't seem to get that. They just want to get in their car and it's, it's a car culture. It's what we do. But the way they've set it up now, it's horrible for disabled people can't get to the mall. And what the city also doesn't recognize is that when usually when somebody in a wheelchair walker is out shopping, there's usually a companion shopper with them. So that's two people they've gotten rid of, if not more, by doing what they've done with the parking, the new parking lot down the street, down Mill Street farther, was done by the same contractor that did the Mill Street Mall. That was his gimme. I was down there yesterday.
Mr. Coulter, that, your minute is up. Thank you.
All right, maybe we should get that timer going.
So Mr. Coulter, there is a timer going. It's at the top of the screen.
It's not on my screen. I don't have a little hand either to raise.
I'd like to rebut if I may, if I can see that now.
Mr. Bonamolo, we need to let everyone answer and then we'll let you rebut. And I, I also am having a hard time with the hands raising, so please speak up if you want to rebut. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we go to Mr. Ivy now.
Yeah, that's right. You know, on our 10 or 20 busiest events of the year, we have, we have a parking problem and that's fair to say. And we're never going to be able to fix that. So let's just get ahead of that right now. That's a product of our success. And so what we can do is we can improve accessibility, we can improve loading zones, we can work with public transit on those days. We can work with our employees downtown, like, like some other candidates have said. So, yeah, let's put some good thought into that. Let's put some good work into that. And then on the other 350 days of the year, you know, I don't have a parking problem downtown and I think that many of us don't either. So, but let's continue to work on it. You know, I want to hear each, each, each concern in this community. And we want to continue to make it a better place for everyone. But lately, I, I would reject the notion that seven days a week, we have a problem. So I, I think it's a great community that's accessible, but needs, needs us to keep thinking about how we can improve it.
Thank you. Ms. Arbuckle?
Yes, there's no doubt that we have a parking issue, but we've always had a parking issue. Even when Mill Street was open, it was a lucky day if you got to park in front of the business you were going to. We've added and reconfigured the Church Street parking lot. There are more handicap spaces now than there were on Mill Street when it was open. And all the, the only difference is instead of being right in front of what is now the Owl again, it is on the outside in the parking lot on the Owl, at the Owl. So we've actually tried to accommodate people with, with mobility issues. And we're working really hard with our businesses to try to see if there is a way we can, they can enforce their employees to park in a permit lot because it is available to them. And so there, there's one business that she tells that she has told her employees, if you park-
Ms. Arbuckle, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your minute's up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bonamolo, did you still want to use your last rebuttal?
Yeah, it was one of the council people that just mentioned that we have a, you know, oh yeah, we have a mobility issue. We have a retirement community here. I think like a heavy percentage of the people are senior citizens that have a mobility issue with getting to, to these spots. So I just wanted to bring attention to that as well. Yeah, there was one other point I had to make, but I'm going to go ahead and just skip now, but that, that's a big part of it, you know? We, a lot, these are the testimonials I've heard from people is that they have a hard time getting to the, to the, to the mall area with parking because they are a senior citizen and that can, that comprises most of our, most of the people locally.
Thank you. Okay, so we have, the next question, we begin with Mr. Branstrom. Each candidate has decried the homeless situation, but none has offered a solution. What would each of the candidates do to mitigate homelessness, starting with Mr. Branstrom?
I'm going to be honest and say I don't have any magic solutions. The homeless problem is a nationwide problem. It's not just a Grass Valley problem, yet we are the ones that have to deal with it. I want us to acknowledge that we do have a large homeless population in our community and I have sympathy for them. I also have concerns when they are camping in a wooded area and are lighting fires. So we do need to address the problem as best we can. Sometimes that means when the police, who are the primary encounter agency, sometimes they need to refer people to mental health treatment and they do also, they do, do that. Sometimes they need to cite people for starting a fire where they shouldn't be starting a fire. Sometimes they need to cite them for trespassing. But I think we need to recognize that the homeless population has the same rights that everybody else does. We can't just kick them out of our community.
Thank you. Mr. Coulter?
Yes, as I said before, I'm the only person on the panel that's been homeless and deals with homeless issues on a nearly daily basis. And it's sad to see that the city of Grass Valley has just given it over to hospitality house and they feel like they don't have any type of homeless problem. Even though some of the same homeless individuals are picked up daily, arrested and let back out within hours repeatedly. Six times in one week. And it's an issue. And because I do have experience with this, my solution is to have a place for them to go versus having them move along, which is what is done by the police every time they encounter them, to move them out of a doorway or move them from where they're at and move along. And without a place for them to go where they can tell them where they can move to, it's going to just be a waste of taxpayers' dollars to just keep moving people from doorway to doorway until, you know, somebody takes action and they get in trouble because they're kicking someone off their doorway or spraying the hose on them, as we've seen in San Francisco video.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ivy?
Well, there's no winning here with this question, right? It's not something that we're going to be able to solve. So we have to do everything we can do and that isn't going to be enough. But, you know, I'm proud of the Grass Valley Police Department for the relationships that they do have with social services, with their, their choice and their expertise to work with compassionate options to give people all the resources that we can give them, to, to work with the county, to leverage our resources so that we can provide every last room, every last house, to transition people, to give people resources, to give themselves the tools to figure it out. And it's not enough. And, and there's no easy road to make sure that we will one day have enough soon. So we just have to keep looking at every single option and-
Oh, Tom, cut out a little, oh.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Arbuckle?
Um, yes, having dealt with the homeless during my career in, as a deputy sheriff in Sacramento and then coming up here and dealing with it on a different level. I was, one of the things that I found worked the best is when you can have a navigation center that has all their resources at one place. Because what I have working with the homeless, there are, you can't paint them with one brush. There are people who are homeless because of situation. There are people that are homeless because they have pets and most shelters won't allow them. There are people that are there and because they want to be there, they don't want to live by society's rules. And so you can't, you can't say, well, this will be the solution to all homelessness all over the state, all over the country. If so, whoever figures that out is going to get a Nobel Peace Prize. They, it's just, there are so many different aspects that there's just, it's difficult, very difficult to figure out.
Thank you. Mr. Bonamolo?
So actually I think we need to provide practical solutions. So a lot of these people, as, as you know, maybe Jan mentioned, you know, they don't want to follow society's rules. Well, this is because a lot of people are inundated with drugs and alcohol and that, that skews their, their ability to do such. So we really need to support law enforcement. We, we can, if we became a home rule county, which I think the city needs to work with the county, to become a home rule county, we can create more of our ordinances. I mean, look at Placer County, they're a home rule county. They drastically cut their homeless population down because they're allowed to make their own rules and they're not beholden to the state. You know, we get money from the state for those things and these people are not able to access those programs and tools because once again, they're doing drugs and alcohol on the street. And that's where really law enforcement comes in to be able to act quick, quickly and be able to hold these people longer, get them into drug programs, et cetera. We're not doing that right now. We're just letting this go willy nilly after the fact, so.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, Ms., Mr. Coulter, you answer first. And the question is, there are many public roads that are vital for our circulation, especially during an emergency such as a fire, that are not part of the city's maintained road system and are therefore falling apart. What is the city's responsibility to maintain these? And can the fire sales tax money be used to improve roads like these?
Yeah, I'd like a few examples, but what pops in my head immediately is, I think is Doris Drive, where it turns to gravel from pavement. And we have a lot of places in town that are actually gravel roads, believe it or not, and gravel driveways against code. And bushes growing out past the white edge of the road on Idaho, Maryland, right by a railroad. There's a lot of work that could be done and that's why it's so frustrating to see public works drive around in their trucks, empty trucks, and without tools, and they just drive around. When these things need to be nipped away at on a nonstop basis, year round, we used to have a painting crew that painted stripes on the street year round. And they were taken away a number of years ago. And if you notice, there's no stripes on the streets. They're all worn off. We choose not to do that any longer, which makes it also very dangerous for bicycles, which I'm the only person that rides a bike, walks and rides the bus. I don't drive. So I'm aware of how dangerous our roads are here, which is outrageous.
Thank you. Mr. Ivy?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes, there are many public roads that are vital for our circulation, especially during an emergency such as a fire, that are not part of the city's maintained road system and are therefore falling apart. What is the city's responsibility to maintain these roads? And can the fire sales tax money be used to improve roads like these?
Well, all the, all the, all the roads that are in the city of Grass Valley that aren't overseen by Caltrans are looked at by the city staff. And we spend Measure E money, not fire sales tax, to maintain them as fast as we can. And it's not quite enough money to do it fast enough to keep up with all the damage. So we, our staff does their best and some roads do falter the cracks so that what you can do is tell us. Because it is an uphill battle. And so that leads to the question though, that, you know, this is a team game. There's a, there's a county transportation commission where all of us try to work together and figure out what roads are most important for fire ingress and egress, Caltrans, the county, the cities. And so hopefully we never have to figure that out. Will Measure B fire money be spent on roads? I don't think so, but I don't know that it's out of the picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Arbuckle?
The roads have always been an issue and our, we do the best we can. And as, as Tom said, Measure, Measure B money won't probably not be spent on roads because it's definitely designated for wildfire mitigation and fire personnel. Now Measure E does have the ability to put money towards our, towards our infrastructure. But again, a lot of times having somebody take pictures and post them on social media without a date, time and location, it's hard for us, for us or our city staff to actually understand where it is so that they can go and try and figure out how we can mitigate it in a very timely manner. None of us want to drive on potholes and so, I mean, but we're trying to do the best we can. We are a small city, small staff, small resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bonamolo?
Please repeat. Thank you.
There are many public roads that are vital for our circulation, especially during an emergency such as a fire, that are not part of the city's maintained road system and are therefore falling apart. What is the city's responsibility to maintain these and can the fire sales tax money be used to improve roads like these?
So kind of like what Matthew said earlier, you know, we need to follow the money. You know, there's a lot of money in the budget. I think we have $21 million surplus from the following year, which has already been planned to be spent on mostly, you know, things like Lyman Gilmore School or the skate park, you know? I, I love, I love these ideas as well, but we need to be practical in spending the money. And when it comes to our roads, that's obviously a vital aspect of our community to be able to get around. So I, I think we just need to take a look, a really concerned look at the money that we have available to spend and also work with the county. Once again, I think about home rule county, we'd be a lot more apt to do these things and work together versus being beholden to the state for grants and such.
Thank you. Mr. Branstrom?
I'd like to draw a distinction between roads that are used by the public and roads that are actually public roads. We have a lot of private roads in Nevada County in the hundreds of miles within the city limits. We have some of those. I don't know the actual number or the mileage. But those private roads are not the responsibility of the city. The city can use its funds and we are using our Measure E and, and sales, uh, gas tax monies to repair our roads and maintain them. But I don't think it's a good use of, of our monies to spend that on private roads. Regarding Measure B, Measure B has very specific things that were proposed, the money be spent on when it went to the voters. And my belief is that those items were not to be working on roads. I think evacuation planning was part of that, so we could use some of those monies to identify roads that might be critical in an evacuation to help the people in those neighborhoods deal with that issue.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we begin with you, Mr. Ivy. A lot of city residents have found it difficult to get affordable house insurance. What would you do to help our residents get a fair deal on insurance?
House insurance is the elephant in the room and the issue of our times. And so what we can do, that the city of Grass Valley is trying to do, is change. The first thing that we're trying to do in the short term is provide a more affordable greenway situation. Provide free greenways and make it more affordable for our tree operators, our homeowners and just our citizens to be, to have a drop off spot for your greenways. In effect, giving ourselves the tools that we need to maintain our homes in a way that hopefully we won't need home insurance as much. Over the long term, what can we do? I think that I'll let the Jan Arbuckle speak a little bit more to what our collaborative efforts are with the city and the county and the league of cities. But we're raising our voice and we're trying to figure out and say, hey, this isn't working out and we need to find a better way. So in the short term, let's give ourselves more tools. In the long term, let's do even more. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Arbuckle?
So wildfire insurance affects everybody. It doesn't matter where you live, where, what, what your demographic is. We, I am working with the California CSEC, California State Association of Calis, I have to wait for the acronym. And we are working on how we can work with the insurance commissioner to not treat us all with one brush. And that's what's being, that's what's happening at this time. If, if you live in this zip code, it doesn't matter- If if you live in this zip code, it doesn't matter how much you mitigate your home. This is then your fire insurance is is subject to being canceled. We are looking to do whatever cream, that's what Measure B is for, for to try and do some more wildfire mitigation to mitigate as much as we can. We are also looking at putting a biomass um facility here so that we can actually safely and economically get rid of that green waste. Once it, once it is cut, once the trees are cut down. I'm at times up.
Thank you. Mr. Bonamolo?
Okay, please repeat again. Thank you.
A lot of city residents have found it difficult to get affordable house insurance. What would you do to help our residents get a fair deal on insurance?
It's going to boil again, down and again to, you know, uh us being beholden to state guidelines and with insurance companies. You know, we, we need to hold the insurance company, the insurance industry accountable. They are chasing people out of our county and our town by, by, you know, raising the prices on the insurance. The state gives us uh other programs that are out of reach for most people. And it's just, again, if we could uh work with the county to become a home rule county, we're act, we're able to, you know, draw up our own ordinances. You know, work with private industry a little bit more. And um, you know, I just think that following all the state guidelines and having to to uh work with the monies that we want to get in grants from them, it really, it doesn't filter down to the, to the people that can use them all the time. So that's, that's get uh have the ability to create our own rules in this county. And I think you'll see some of those problems easily, more easily solved.
Thank you. Mr. Branstrom?
Thank you. I'm going to take a risk perspective on this. Fire insurance has skyrocketed because the risk of wildfire has skyrocketed. Most insurance issues are dealt with at the state level through the legislature and the insurance commission. And what we can do on one item is work with them to make sure that any mitigation efforts that we do locally are included in our um fire insurance.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? My, my.
Are you cut out? Yeah.
Okay, the, the one other thing that we can do is uh reduce our wild risk, wildfire risk locally, which is what Measure B will be doing.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Coulter?
Yes, I'd say pressuring our board, um county board members and elected representatives above that level to work on it at the state level because this isn't something that we can really do locally because we're beholden to uh national companies that are at the whim of the stock market. And being that our fire situation here is terrain driven, we are going to be the last in line for anything to happen positively for people on insurance here. And that is one of the reasons only the wealthy can afford to live here now. And we're chasing so many people out of California, so many people out of this area is because it has just become outrageously expensive to even purchase a house and own a house locally.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, uh we begin with Ms. Arbuckle. The fire safety sales tax that passed last spring, Measure B, passed by only twenty votes. Did you support this measure? Is oversight of this and all special revenue funds adequate? And what would you do, do, what would you do to build confidence that this money will be used effectively?
Um, yes, we, we are very aware that it was a very narrow margin um that Measure B passed. The entire city council voted, we didn't vote for a tax. We voted to have the voters have that option by putting it on the ballot. And I think that that's a misconception that people have. We didn't put it on the ballot. We said, let the voters decide what they want. And we have, we did as we promised and we have seated an oversight commission so that they can say, see the small portion of the sales tax that is dedicated in Measure B is being spent the way we told and we promised the voters, just like we have in Measure N. Measure N has an oversight committee. And they are the ones that say, make sure that that money is spent according to the voters' wishes. And much more than that, other than having a little bit more um transparency and having the, the information put on our website, which we are now doing as what, as far as what Measure B is doing and now and Measure N as well.
Thank you. Mr. Bonamolo?
Uh, please repeat. Thank you.
The fire safety sales tax that passed last spring, Measure B, passed by only twenty votes. Did you support this measure? Is oversight of this and all special revenue funds adequate? And what would you do to build confidence that this money will be used effectively?
Well, I do think um that the responsible uh mission here is to see that the funds are allocated properly. So that's how, you know, digging into the numbers and holding uh, holding accountable for the allocation of this fund is a big, is a big issue. You know, raising taxes on people that are already struggling and really barely making it in this, in this town is, seems to be an issue. You know, this is a general tax too, so it does not guarantee that that these funds will be used for this. It says maybe and can be and those types of wordings. And it's assumed, you know, if you read the, if you read the uh, the budget. So that leaves a little bit of interpretation on how the money can be spent. That's why I think it's so important to have a really great oversight on this money and how it is spent and is spent uh properly and appropriately.
Thank you. Mr. Branstrom?
Thank you. Um, yes, I supported Measure B in two ways. One, I supported putting it on the ballot so the voters could decide. And yes, I did vote for it when I had the opportunity to do so. Regarding how the money is spent, I uh am very supportive of our uh oversight committee that will be reviewing all expenditures made from that fund to make sure that it is spent in the ways that the uh, it was presented to taxpayers. I also would like to see us leverage those monies so that they are more effectively used by working as much as we can with neighborhood fire wise communities. We already have, that I know of, four of those communities within Grass Valley. And I encourage everyone in a neighborhood to either join an existing one or create one in your neighborhood so that you can help and be part of the process.
Thank you. Mr. Coulter?
Yes, I definitely don't, didn't support it, don't support it, don't support the oversight committee, being that the ex-mayor and the woman who calls herself the city, uh, what does she call herself, the city horticulturist are on the oversight committee. Now, the city horticulturist's mother runs the historic commission, which was disbanded. The mayor decided not to run again on the very last moment when I ran last time because I was his opponent. The whole thing is a scam. And if you follow the money, once again, you will see that is not being used correctly. It is not getting to its end use where it's supposed to get to. And it taints this people that want their city to do good things with tax raises. And so when we ask again for a tax raise, I doubt it'll ever happen again after what has happened with this, with the twenty votes, the scam, the way the math was done and the fact that it even went in front of the judges and then was repeat, was pulled back because of the financial aspect of the city just dumping money at the person that was fighting.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ivy?
Uh, heck yeah, I support Measure B. Uh, no, it's never fun to win uh any close race or to win a tax measure by twenty votes. No, our job is to represent the city of Grass Valley, so um it passed. It's, it's not the, not the most fun thing to hear that it's only by twenty votes, but yes, uh, I just answered the last question that we're trying to do everything we can do to protect our community against rising home insurance prices and against wildfire and against climate change. Yes, I look forward to playing a role in Measure B money and making sure that it's spent effectively, giving our homeowners, our constituents, the people who live here, the, the ability to do something, the ability to protect themselves, to protect this community, to make it a greater place tomorrow. Yeah, I'm all in on that. Uh, no, taxes are not just a fun, happy thing. But yes, let's do the best that we can do. And so uh it is a general tax, it is not a special tax, it's not a special revenue source, it's a general tax. And the city of Grass Valley has a good history of being extremely transparent with their general taxes. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we move to our closing argument. We start with Jan Arbuckle. And we go to Tom, then Matt, Bob and Jan Arbuckle. Wait, sorry. I've got confused because I guess we end with Joe. Excuse me. Okay. So we start with Jan, we'll end with Joe. So Jan Arbuckle, please begin.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters and my fellow candidates and the viewing public for this opportunity to connect on this virtual format. Being a council member has given me the opportunity to continue my passion for public service. They say it becomes part of your DNA. I have proven I am willing and able to dedicate the time and energy for the betterment of Grass Valley and its residents, a place where a sense of community, history and ownership prevails. Being elected to the city council will allow me to continue to move the city through this challenging economic time by looking for innovative ways to bring economic development to our city, to seek creative ways to make local government more efficient and to enhance the quality of life for all of our residents. I offer the leadership, independence and vision necessary for Grass Valley to achieve its greatest potential. I am fiscally responsible, independent, accessible and dedicated to the Grass Valley residents. We solve our problems best from optimism, not pessimism, through cooperation and unity, not divisiveness. Together, we can make Grass Valley the best place to live, work and raise a family. A wise woman taught me that wisdom comes from listening to others. I will continue to be available to listen to your issues, concerns and suggestions. I would be honored to continue to serve you as a member of the Grass Valley City Council and respectfully ask for your vote. If you have any questions, please contact me at arbuckleforgvcitycouncil@gmail.com. And thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Ivy?
Uh, thank you, League of Women Voters. Thank you to our constituents out there. Congratulations to my other four candidates. Democracy is an important conversation and we're better off when more of us have a chance to be part of this conversation. Uh, I would like to thank my family for giving me the ability to play my role uh in the past. It's a role that I love. Uh, I love my home and I've loved getting the chance to put in a lot of work, just like I know everyone else here who already works for their community in their various ways. And I look forward to doing that tomorrow. And I'd like to ask for your vote to do that, to continue to do more of that. You can find more about me at tomivy.net. Thank you so much to everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Coulter?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for having this forum because in the old days, we, everyone used to have a forum, the radio stations, the union. And you guys seem to be the only ones interested these days, so thank you for that. I probably have gone to more meetings than I could honestly say anyone in the county over the years and can connect the dots, can see that many things are being duplicated at multiple levels. And many things are being completely ignored at multiple levels. Um, I'm on the street every day. Like I said, I walk, I bike, I ride the bus. So I'm a little bit more in tune to what is happening on the streets in Grass Valley in Nevada County than any of my constituents here that are running. When I joined the Marines at sixteen to go fight the Iranians and get our hostages back, it's kind of a deja vu that we're back in that situation now with the war with the Iranians. So they're not on the stress, but on the local folks on national matters, international matters and local matters, I think are a bit much uh to take for a lot of people. And when they see the city doing pet projects and things that benefit a few people, it disappoints them when they have to drive over these potholes and they have to drive on these roads that are so dangerous. We have bicycle accidents and and even a four-year-old hit in front of City Hall the other day. These things happen in communities, but we have a very special community and it needs to be treated as it is a special community from its inception till now versus trying to duplicate what's going on in Roseville and in Rockland and other areas that were built in the last few years and have wide roads, wide streets, wide sidewalks and new infrastructure. We have a very ancient place. We need to treat it historically correct. And I feel like we're not. And I hope to serve the people as I've done my entire life with volunteering for the Marines and the United States Army Airborne, as well as many other volunteer for the federal government, state government and local government. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Branstrom?
I want to thank everybody who has made this work tonight, this forum. This is great. Thank you. There's an old saying, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I'm here to tell you, Grass Valley isn't broken. In fact, we are a strong city and we are directly facing the issues that we face. We have a lot more good things coming, um, some of them from uh investment, people investing in the community, including our nonprofits such as the uh New Events Center and Crown Point. We also have new stuff the city is doing, wildfire risk reduction, extension of the Wolf Creek Trail through town and out to Sutton Avenue to provide pedestrian and bike uh access uh through town. We're updating the skate park in Condon Park. We continue to pave our roads with a big project in the next year being South Auburn between Main and Neal Streets that really needs it. We also have possible new park for biking and hiking in the Loma Rica area and a possible new biofuel energy plant. I love serving as a Grass Valley City Council member and would like to continue to do so. I ask for your vote. Uh, I'm supported by a range of people with different views and I'm proud to have the endorsement of both the Nevada County Democrats and the Nevada County Contractors Association. If you want to keep Grass Valley thriving, keep it an inviting place to live and work, please vote for those of us making that happen right now, doing the hard work. That's me, Bob Branstrom, and my colleagues, Jen Arbuckle and Tom Ivy. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bonamolo?
Uh, okay. Well, thank you, everybody, for having me today. I really appreciate to be able to voice my uh, my opinions and and state some facts. Um, I, I, there's an old saying that I know, it's called action talks, action talks and BS walks, you know? And uh, I think that uh, you know, we have a bit of a broken issue in, in this town, like many towns across America right now. And that's because um there's a, you know, I heard, I heard some of these statements and it sounded pretty canned and rehearsed, you know? There's, I'm, I'm just going to take the fluff right out of it and say, I will go to work, I will do my job. I've stated to many people before, I would do this job for free because it's our duty as Americans to step up and do the hard work, be involved in government. You know, and be able to, to devote your time to being selfless and not being worried about, you know, a large paycheck, giving ourselves raises and spending the money on just, you know, beautiful things and not the practical issues that we really all face. So you can count on me to work hard, to attack the practical issues and to work with county government and to getting these problems solved. And if you want to contact me with questions, I'm at joeforgv dot uh joe for joeforgv@gmail.com. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. That concludes our forum with the Grass Valley City Council candidates. Thank you for your time and um have a good evening.